We'll reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, May 25, 2022. At this time, will you all rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Following the tragedy in Texas yesterday, as well as the other acts of violence that happened to students yesterday in the DC area, I would ask us all to take a moment to reflect and to consider how fortunate we all are and to consider those who are not. Thank you. I bring apologies from our board chair, Mrs. Karen Bailey. She is wearing her parent hat this evening. Her daughter is a member of the Chopticon Lady Braves softball team, and they have had quite a season, and they are playing in the semifinals this evening out of the area. So Mrs. Bailey is there supporting all of Chopticon. Mrs. Weaver is not with us this evening as her son is graduating from college, and so she is in Pennsylvania to see his graduation and to celebrate with him and their family. So they send their regrets, but we certainly understand why. So the first thing on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move that the board approve the agenda as presented.
You have a motion, you have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Board reports. We will start with Judy, our student board member.
Good evening, everyone. Sorry for my voice. I have bronchitis, but I'm on antibiotics, so don't worry. It's been a while, and I've been pretty busy since the last time I've been here, but back in late April, I toured Harvard and Yale, and to no one's surprise, I still chose Yale, so go Bulldogs. When I got back from my trip, SLAC held the last meeting of the year, and we got a number of things done. It was our summit meeting, and we essentially wrapped up everything we worked on this school year, which included student motivation and demotivation, student engagement and learning, and student behavior. I'm super excited to see what Dr. Smith and everyone else at Central Office will do with the homework we assigned them. I also had the pleasure of doing the greetings at the SMCPS recognition event earlier this month. I delivered a short speech about slowing down and taking the time to relish in our accomplishments rather than always worrying about what's next. The event was super fun, and I was able to meet many talented students involved in athletics, academics, fine and performing arts, service, and much more. I also attended the Academy of Global and International Studies GIS Research Symposium. Students in GIS spend their entire junior year developing a research project. They must develop a research question, gain approval from the institutional review board to actually conduct their research, collect firsthand data, analyze their findings, draw conclusions, and write a 25 to 30-page paper. They also have to orally present and defend their research findings. Then they get to make pretty posters and present their research to their family and friends. So that was a super informative and exciting event, and if you didn't know, I'm also a GIS student, and I was able to publish my research for my junior year, so I'm very excited to see each generation of GIS students learn to love research. I'm also super pleased by the community engagement at the Run for Andy 5K held at Leonardtown High School last Sunday. I did not run the event, but I did leisurely walk. I was passed by a number of people, including Dr. Montgomery, Mrs. Mills, Mrs. O'Brien, and that's okay. It's about the journey, not the destination. And finally, this will probably be my last meeting of the school year that I will attend as the SMCPS student member of the Board of Education, and I just want to acknowledge what an honor it has been to represent the students of St. Mary's County and how I hope to see many more eager faces sitting on this board, probably in the seat, ready to learn about our beautiful school system. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Judy.
What an act of fidelity. I had scheduled a cruise in February, and as it were, we found out that a lot of the ships could not, the passengers couldn't get off the boats, and they were locked in the ships for most of the cruise, so we canceled. And I decided to go to Bermuda. And so a couple of weeks ago, we went out of Baltimore in a ship and went to Bermuda. Bermuda was on my bucket list. I've always wanted to go to Bermuda and never had the opportunity, and so we went there, and the first thing I found out is I didn't know much about Bermuda. I've been all over the Caribbean, sailed, flown planes, and been on cruise ships, but I had never been to Bermuda. So I decided to do some research before I reached the island, and I found that Juan Bermuda's, it was recorded, I think, in about 1507, first made an island chart where it showed Bermuda at around, I guess, about 32 latitude. And for about 100 years, the Spanish really never occupied the island. They were too busy going down to Central America and South America in their quest for gold. So there was really no economic advantage to colonize Bermuda. It was by accident in 1607 that a ship called the Sea Venture, a British ship, on its way to Jamestown in 1609, excuse me, and it shipwrecked. And most of the passengers survived, and they basically colonized that island. And like the Caribbean, I didn't know this for a long time, all these Caribbean islands that were owned by European powers were more valuable than the whole North American continent. I mean, back before the revolution, the only products in North America were furs, where the European powers had complete control of sugarcane and molasses, which was a cash crop. And it wasn't until much later that Bermuda really took a strategic part in the British Navy. It became a, basically a fortress island and was instrumental in, I think, the War of 1812, of course, the Revolution, and even Confederates worked with the British during the Civil War, American Civil War. So it's now a beautiful island. It's primarily focused, the economy's focused in tourism. One of the things I noticed, that I didn't see a piece of paper, a piece of trash, and I was looking for them. The time that I got off that ship until I got back on, the island is really wonderfully taken care of, and it's mainly occupied by ex-slaves and indentured servants from the British colonies over the years. Very nice place to go, and I would urge, if you had a chance, go to Bermuda.
Thank you, sir. I, as Judy spoke about the student recognition, I attended the student recognition at Leonardtown High School for all students within the county. We recognized students for their achievements in math and science and music, the arts, the National Junior ROTC, or Navy Junior ROTC at Great Mills High School, Skills USA. It was a great evening, and the opportunity to recognize the incredible work of students and their efforts throughout the year is always an enjoyable event. So, Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. There are so many activities going on at the end of the school year, so many celebratory events, and I have participated in many of those. I attended the St. Mary's County Public Schools Student Recognition. I attended and talked to the global and international students about their 11th-grade capstone projects. About 25 students presented their projects, and the program is held at Leonardtown High School. Mrs. Allen and I attended the Esperanza Middle School National Honor Society induction last night, and I participated in the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Conference Planning Committee. That was a virtual meeting. But the event I want to highlight is how I had an exciting, enlightening, and insightful tour of historic St. Mary's City with the students from Greenview No's Elementary School and Diner Elementary School. I had an amazing time, and so did the students and the educators. The students were in awe of the new things they learned and the hands-on demonstration. They were definitely learning by doing, and they thoroughly enjoyed the following. The students learned about the inhabitants, their daily lives and how they live. They went inside a long house and learned about its occupants and how it is made. They made rope from leaves to be used for fishnets, carryall, sewing, or tying things together. Then they were told how the occupants found an appropriate log from a tree, and they dug this log out to build a canoe. So the students had an opportunity to use shells to dig out this log to make a canoe. And you would think that would take a long time to do, but they worked together as a team, the people who lived there, and they could do it in record time. Also, the students had an opportunity to plant corn, and they learned about the benefits of the corn watchtower. They saw the chickens, the pigs, and the steer, who were not afraid of visitors, because visitors come all the time. And we entered and compared the various homes during that period, the owners and the contents. We looked at a home of somebody who was well-off, which would have a wood floor, and the contents of a house of just regular worker, who the floor in their house would be dirt. We learned about homemade medicine. They didn't have a pharmacy, so they made their own medicine for different maladies that they would have: headaches, stomachaches. Usually, it was things they grew in the garden. We went inside a tobacco barn, and we learned how tobacco was grown and how it was processed. And the students really enjoyed being in a rural setting with the fresh air and just wide-open spaces. Students come from all over the state of Maryland to visit historic St. Mary's City, and it is a treasure that is right here, and our students visit. We went on trails. It's a four-hour tour that the students go on. And then they had lunch by the river. They could eat on the grass and enjoy the river and the sounds of the river. And then they went to the original State House and visited the Maryland Dove. I know the students and the teachers, when they got back to school, wrote in their journals about their experience at historic St. Mary's City, and it was evident to me by the glow in their eyes and the enthusiasm and their eagerness to ask questions led me to believe they're going to remember it for a long time. So I want to thank Mr. Peter Ferson, the Education Director at St. Mary's City, for inviting the board there for a tour, and I just feel so honored that we have so many wonderful opportunities to experience living history. Students also visit Sodley Plantation, of which I have gone on many field trips with students, and these were the fourth and fifth grade students at the elementary school. So it's a wonderful place to visit. The family, you can take your family there for an outing if you like. They have programs for little kids, two- and three-year-old children, where they have parents, and they have something for everyone. And also, they have good food there, too. I ate lunch there, and the food was really delicious. So that's my report, and it's, like I say, St. Mary's County is a wonderful place to live, work, play, and learn.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We are the mother county of Maryland. All of the counties came from St. Mary's, and none, obviously, is better. So with that, yeah, there have been, uh-oh, there we go. There it is. We really have done so many things over the last couple of weeks. Of note, that hasn't been referenced yet is Dr. Farrell and all the people up in HR and Dr. Moore gathered together resources from partnering universities, Notre Dame, College of Southern Maryland, Towson, Salisbury, and UMG C, to talk to our staff about how they can go about moving from wherever they are to the next level. So for somebody who may have come in as a non-certificated employee, how they can get certificated. If they are certificated, how they can pursue a master's or an additional ANA certification, something like that. It was a great group all together at Captain Walt Francis Duke. Wonderful. We're going to be doing many more events like that. And when we talk about the Project Lead, there's a lot of elements of that as well. We welcome Maryland Leadership, Leadership Maryland down here, as we do every single year in May. They come down to the Tech Center. These are 50, I think it's 51 participants this year from all across the state, representing every single one of the counties, and they get together and they have multiple sessions throughout the year where they take a look at all the different facets in Maryland, from government and private industry. And we are their education stop. So they come here to talk about what's going on in education, to ask questions, to get answers. As we walk in to the beautiful atrium at the Tech Center, they were greeted by the Leonardtown High School band, jazz band directed by Mr. Martin. Just unbelievable. They were blown away. Afterwards, they came up several times, several of them came up to say, you have some of the most fantastic performers we've ever heard. And these were people from like Howard County and Montgomery County, where they're all like, we're all about this. And they were saying, and I said, yeah, of course, absolutely, absolutely. And that's why, of course, that ties into the recognition that we're going to be doing just in a little bit. It was wonderful. Senator Pinsky was down to talk about Blueprint for Maryland, and I have to tell you, he shared nothing that we didn't already know. And in fact, there was a great deal of information that was shared in the morning, I think, that helped deepen the understanding of these people who are not in education, understanding what's going on in education. There's a lot to celebrate. Look, there's a picture of Judy, who gave up to give the speech and said, everybody, hey, everybody, kind of relax, chill out a little bit, enjoy. You know, you've earned some laurels. Rest on them a little bit. Take the time to really appreciate what has been accomplished by all of the wonderful people in St. Mary's County and in the lives of children, especially as they prepare to commence next week. The joyous pictures of the Chopticon Braves winning over Northern. Somebody had to send me those. I wasn't allowed to go. Karen Bailey banned me because she said when I show up, they don't perform as well as they do when I'm not there. So I'm torn. The last prom was this weekend, also at Chopticon, where they had fireworks. It was a beautiful send-off to a lot of celebrations. There were eight, there were four eighth-grade dances on Friday night as well. So to all of the parents and to all of the staff, God bless you and thank you. Providing a lot of really great things for our kids to celebrate as we come into. Again, we have summer programs. If you're, you know, we're 13 and a half days from the end of school for our children. So if you're thinking, you're looking at these lovely angels of joy, and you're saying, oh, man, in 13 and a half days, you're just mine every day all the way. So summer camps and recovery and opportunities are available. Please take advantage of them. So just to do a little review, right, we have two days this week, and Judy and all of our seniors in all of our high schools are going to start practicing, because it turns out it's not as easy as you would think to get everybody in a cap and gowns to take a picture, right? Some people decide to faint, some people...
It was a horror event.
Some people have things, yeah, there's lots of, you know.
It's humanity.
So we'll be doing that for the next two days. We have a lot of awards assemblies and things like that going on. We have a three-day weekend. It looks like it's going to rain. So again, enjoy yourself, enjoy the rain, because we cannot afford to have any rain on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, because we are going to commence 1,200 seniors across stadiums and beautiful playing fields. It's going to be hot, so bring your appropriate, you know, face-damping materials, but it's going to be lovely. After that, the week after that, we have the Length of Service recognition for all of our employees who have hit milestones, as well as those who are going to be retiring. We have a Board of Ed meeting. The last day for pre-K and Head Start is June 10, that Friday. The kids come back, they have two full days, and the last half-day for students is June 15. And by action of the board at our last meeting, the last day for teachers is on Friday, June 17, because you passed and determined that everybody would have the holiday of Monday, June 20, in recognition of the Juneteenth federal holiday. So thank you very much for all of that. We're really busy. We've got a lot of great things going on. Mrs. Allen started, I'm sorry, Mrs. Allen started with a letter talking about the tragedy that has happened in Texas and that continues, we continue to have these news events, we continue to have these things happen. We have to steel ourselves against becoming numb to them. We need to feel everyone as visceral as the first time this happened in Columbine in the 90s. We did send a letter out at the end of the day today informing parents of the resources that we've sent out to schools to help kids who have questions and the trauma and triggering that this may cause. And then the other side of it is a listing of all the safety measures that St. Mary's County Public Schools has worked to implement in the last decade to try to make our schools as safe as they can possibly be while still allowing them to be centers for joy and expression and learning and all of that. So we have all of that. But I want to end with something exceptionally positive. On next Friday, Leonardtown Elementary School is going to gather together, and they're going to celebrate and recognize all of their students for having read the million-page reading challenge. They set a goal for all of their kids to read a million pages this year, and they did. So they asked me to be there, and I can't because I'm going to be busy shaking hands with Chopticon grads. So this is my message to all of you at Leonardtown Elementary School. Congratulations on an incredible job, reading a million pages. To get, there were different levels of apples. To get to the golden apple, to get to the golden apple, they had to read 100 books, and there were over 100 students who read 100 books and are receiving golden apples. So to all of those who received an apple, and especially those golden apples, well done. Continue that. Over the summer, continue. Let's see if you can do another 100 in the three months that were apart. So with that, thank you very much.
And I think that deserves a round of applause. Well done, Leonardtown Elementary. The next item on our agenda is one that is bittersweet for me. It is the Student Board Member Recognition. You guys are making sure that I just choke up at every opportunity to speak. Thank you so much. Over the last year, the students of this system have been ably represented by our student member of the board, Ms. Judy Nguyen. Judy has consistently worked to be a well-informed member of the board, no small effort, given her student workload, her work with student government, and her senior-year college applications, just to name a few things. She has been knowledgeable, articulate, and extremely thoughtful in her questions, observations, and in the information she has shared with all of us. The board takes very seriously the input of our student member. We have seen Judy as a valued member of this board. She has been an inspiration to each of us and an incredible advocate for her fellow students. We will miss her very much. Sorry. As the vice chair, it is my responsibility to be the mentor to our student board members, and so I develop a pretty close relationship with each of our student members of the board, and this has been an incredible year. We wish her every success as she heads to Yale University this fall, the only place she ever wanted to go. On behalf of the Board of Education, we thank you for all your work as our SMAB, the student member of the board. So if you'll come join me. We have the way for you to remember us as you head off to Yale. Whether you, you know, use pen and paper any longer, I don't know, but who can't use a few Post-it notes? And we also give you this certificate of recognition. And following our meeting today, we have some system tokens and personal things for Judy to give her. And so I will invite you to please share a few words, if you would.
I honestly did not prepare for this. I'm sorry if I stutter or anything. I'm going to start crying, Kathy. Oh, my God. Well, being SMAB has been a dream of mine since I met our SMAB in eighth grade at the NJHS ceremony. So if you didn't know, I went to LMS, and when you get inducted, the SMCPS SMAB comes and speaks. And the SMAB at the time, she was just so, like, the speech she gave was very inspirational and, you know, and it seemed like there was a lot of respect for her, and she was very motivational and just, you know, kind of spurred me on that, like, you can do whatever you put your mind to, or set yourself out and do what you seek. And so going to high school, I've always had like goals in mind, and I've always had an idea or something to motivate myself to be that person, to be that version of myself that I always wanted to be. So, you know, fulfilling this role and, you know, meeting students and inspiring others to run or inspiring students to achieve at their fullest potential has been the greatest reward of this position. So thank you so much for listening to my board reports for this entire school year and listening to my questions and answering my questions. But thank you so much. It's been an honor.
Absolutely.
She also wore my favorite color, so thank you.
When I say I know her well. All right, and the next item on our agenda is from Mr. Burrows, who will be sharing with us the best community for music education, St. Mary's County Public Schools.
Dr. Smith, can I borrow your clipper?
It is all yours, good sir.
Thank you very much.
Yep, yep.
Right, team.
He can click right from the podium. It's, it's, it's the, it's the joy of being able to move about.
It's magic. Well, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Recently, the National Association for Music Merchants designated St. Mary's County as a best community for music education. The award recognizes outstanding efforts by teachers, administrators, parents, students, and community leaders, who have made music education part of a well-rounded education. Designations are made to districts and schools to demonstrate an exceptionally high commitment and access to music education. St. Mary's County was one of nine counties in Maryland to receive this honor. Tonight, we celebrate this designation while also congratulating our music educators. It is my pleasure to welcome three of our teachers representing band, chorus, and orchestra at the elementary, middle, and high school levels, to tell their stories of how music education has impacted their schools, their communities, and themselves. First, you will hear from Pately Bonjourney, the Director of Choirs at Esperanza Middle School. Next, you will hear from Christina Burrows, the Director of Orchestras at Evergreen Elementary School. Finally, you will hear from Matthew Pearson, the Director of Bands at Great Mills High School. Ms. Bonjourney?
Good evening, and thank you for having us at tonight's board meeting. As Mr. Burrows said, my name is Pately Bonjourney, and I teach chorus as well as general music at Esperanza. Esperanza had our spring band, chorus, and orchestra concerts about two weeks ago, and one of the most meaningful moments of the chorus concert for me happened after all of the performances. I had the parent of a graduating eighth grader approach me and say, "Thank you so much for the concert." His son had a solo in one of the pieces that we performed, and I praised how well he sang. But the parent thanked me and explained that he was much more grateful for the confidence that music had instilled in his son over these past three years. The confidence to try out for a solo and to audition for the musical, and get into the musical, when in sixth grade, he was nervous to sing even if it was in a small group. Making the chorus room a welcoming space that encourages students to make mistakes plays such a huge role in building students' confidence in this way. I always get sixth graders in the beginning of the year who say, "I'm not a good singer," or "I can't sing," or "I only sing in the shower." And I always tell them that it's okay not to be Beyonce or Adele, nobody can be those people. But by telling them that all they have to do is start where they are and try to improve, the door is opened for building a trusting and judgment-free relationship. This is one of the many ways that music education impacts our students. Music encourages students to step out of their comfort zones, build confidence, and work together as a team to create something truly unique each time. No matter the physical, academic, or social capabilities of any group of students, music can be accessible and achievable if they work together. That's what makes the music room such a safe space for so many of our students in St. Mary's County. I choose to teach music because it's such an important piece of who I am today. In fact, I learned much of the communication skills and life lessons that I'm talking about in my own middle and high school music classrooms. I know that our students will carry these diverse life skills into their future endeavors, and it brings me joy to see that music holds such an important place in their lives as well. Thank you to NAMM for recognizing St. Mary's County as one of the best communities for music education, and thank you to all of the music educators who work so hard each day to build that community.
Extremely well said. Good evening. I wanna take just a quick moment to thank you all for your support of our arts programs. We see you out there at all of our performances, and you are absolutely correct, Ms. Washington, there are so many right now. It just, it means so much to us, because you guys are a big part of why we would be recognized for an award like this. This evening, I get to talk to you about our earliest musical experiences at the elementary level. For some, these may be the child's very first musical experiences. We focus on ways that the students can feel the music, and especially the beat, in our youngest classes. I'm amazed at how early our music teachers are encouraging students to compose rhythms and even short melodies. My second grader has brought home several of these compositions, and her pride in her work is just fantastic, so inspiring to all of us. I have the privilege of teaching the elementary orchestras at Evergreen, and as a third grader, it's often a student's very first instrumental experience. I love my job, and I am famous for telling the kids, "I love my job because I get to play all day." We know there's a lot more to it. I love getting to help our young musicians grow their creativity, their communication, their critical thinking, and their collaboration skills through learning a musical instrument. Performing in an ensemble is a challenging, yet ultimately rewarding, experience where every member is responsible for the success of the group. Seeing the child's faces light up when they have overcome the challenges of learning an instrument, it's just the best, and I get to do it every day. Thank you. Members of our band, chorus, and string ensembles are learning these life skills, such as teamwork and perseverance, and they are helping to prepare these kids when they leave our buildings. I think we continue to celebrate the return to in-person performances because of the connections that we build with these kids. I'd like to share a quick quote from, and, from a book that I recently read, that details the amazing energy exchange during a performance. This is from "Ubeat" by Dr. Matthew Rowell. "When the energy channels are open, the players send their energy toward the conductor, creating an energy loop that energizes the performers, the conductor, the music, and the audience. This is why live performances can feel so electric. The audience becomes part of the energy exchange, feeling the energy from the performance, while also sending their personal energy to the performers. This sensation connects everyone in a kinetic, shared experience. In those moments, everyone in the room feels the physical and emotional connection." I never could have said that better, and I know it's true. I just wanna share that to start our first in-person performance at Evergreen off with a positive connection, I invited our audience to share in what we call a gratitude breath, sending positive vibes to our children. "The feeling that I got simply by leading this breath was completely overwhelming before the musical performance had even begun. By the time my band colleague, Mr. Romano, and I finished the musical performances, I'll admit, joy was leaking out of my eyes." Because of the connection that I felt to the students and our audience. That connection is the reason we all missed those in-person performances so much. I felt it, and I know our students and the audience did as well, because I received more positive feedback than ever before after that performance. I won't stand here and tell you that my or our young musicians' performances were flawless, but I will stand here and tell you that our connection through the power of music was unmistakable. Thank you, Mr. Burrows, for making sure that our county was recognized for the great music-making we have in this county. Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
My name's Matt Pearson, I'm the Director of Bands at Great Mills High School. And, you know, I wanna share the same sentiment that my colleagues have brought up, in the way that music teaches so much more than notes and rhythms. I'm a, I'm a product of St. Mary's County Public Schools myself. I went to Great Mills High School, I went to Esperanza, I went to Town Creek, and I love that I still get to play in those circles, 'cause, you know, I walk those halls sometimes, and they look so much smaller than, than what I remember them to be.
You may be bigger.
Maybe significantly. But I, I want, I wanna share something that I, that I'd share with my students all the time, which is, you can't have reward without risk. We take a risk every day when we, when we're musicians, especially students who, at that point in their lives, are very conscious of their image outward towards other people. It's very scary to sit, to sit in a room of people. And put yourself out there. By the time, and my, I think one of my favorite times of year with this is the first week of school when we start playing, because, especially with my freshmen, some of them have never seen me before, or they've heard in myths and legends or whatever. When we make that first sound, and you can see the tension in their body. Now, fast forward to the spring concert and next week at graduation, when I give that first downbeat, it's just, it just happens. And they've learned through that process that they took a risk in order to get a reward. The same thing happens with us every day. The reason St. Mary's County is a great place to teach and work and learn is that we're allowed to take risks. Take into account our combined indoor programs here, indoor percussion and color guard. We were allowed to be successful because we were trusted to do our job to the utmost of our ability. We were allowed to be given the latitude to play around in the sandbox, right? So, we became an example of what you can do with seemingly unlimited resources, right? Everybody was like, "Who is this group, St. Mary's County?" And all these groups that are from upstate Maryland and southern PA. Not only did we go and perform well, we won candidly. So, and I say "we" because it's not a Great Mills thing, it's not a Chopticon thing, it's not a Leonardtown thing, it's a St. Mary's County thing, and that's why we're great. It doesn't have to be about each school. And each school band is fantastic and an example, and those people that I, that I call my colleagues are an example to me, I'm an example to them, and we're an example to the rest of the state of how we can music educate. So, as a product of this county, I can't say enough good things. And anytime I go anywhere, like a conference, I wish I had a giant, like, St. Mary's County flag that I could just wear and just point to. So, I wanna thank everybody for just being a wonderful set of leaders, my colleagues included, my supervisor included, who I consider a friend and colleague as well, who's also a product of St. Mary's County.
Absolutely.
So, I'm, I'm proud to be here, and I'm proud to teach in this county. Thank you very much.
I think after listening to my three colleagues, we can all understand better why we received this designation. So thank, thank you, and thank you to all of our music educators, and thank you to Dr. Smith and our Board of Education for your continued support. We appreciate it.
Absolutely. And thank you for taking time this evening to come out and share with us. It's very, very, very important and lovely, and you did a great job. Thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Would you like to take a five-minute recess so we can take some pictures?
Sure, sure. If you wanna, do we have?
I don't know if Marian is back there.
Yes, and before you escape. Let's just take a really quick break. We're gonna get you, the three of you up here, come on, come up here. We'll take a lovely picture. I wanna stand next to you.
The, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, first for policy ECF, Energy Conservation. Do we have any? Do not have any speakers for the energy policy, so we will close that. The high school program of studies proposed revisions 22, 23.
No, ma'am.
None for that, so we will close that. And the educational programs for pregnant and parenting students policy, JHCG.
No, ma'am.
All right, thank you very much. If you do have comments on any of these, please, would ask you to email the smcps.org website, boe@smcps.org, and those comments will be shared with us. We will vote on these three policies at the June 8th meeting. Next item is public comment. Do we have anyone for public comment?
Yes, ma'am, we have three.
All right. Well, let me get my key out, so that I can open the drawer.
Should be open.
No, not open. Unless, unless I'm just not strong enough to do that, but, all right. All right, come on, you can do this. So as Mr. Glasper gives the, shares with us the first name, I'll ask you to approach the podium while I read the public comment statement. "The board welcomes public input on policies..."
Name Brewer.
"...on policies and issues affecting our schools. The board takes this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not, however, the appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about those that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent, and we cannot permit comments criticizing individual staff or students, since this is really outside the scope of public comment. The board sits as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals, so we cannot have prior knowledge of a case that would prejudice us. And speakers must sign. And at the beginning of the meeting, public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker, and you may not yield your time to someone else. We would ask speakers, if you have written statements, to please present them to Mr. Glasper, our board secretary, and he will distribute them to members of the board. If you go over your time, we would just ask that, when the buzzer goes off, if you could just wrap up any last comments that you have, we would appreciate that."
Thank you. I'm looking, this is my first time here, so thank you for having me. I feel great here. I love the logo, "Our students and our future," so I wanna speak about that. Good evening, my name is Elena Brewer. I am a St. Mary's County resident. I have three children in the St. Mary's County Public Schools, and to everyone's surprise, probably, but my children absolutely love their teachers. My children love their teachers. They come home, they're happy, they're excited. So this is a tribute to the success of St. Mary's County Public Schools. "I'm very thankful to be a naturalized citizen of the United States. As a person born and raised under the tyranny of the former USSR, the Soviet Union, I'm grateful that America offers limitless possibilities to me and my children. I would also like to express my gratitude for your dedication, board and teachers, especially during the last two years of maneuvering through the obstacles of a worldwide pandemic. However, tonight, I would like to speak about a different pandemic. I want to speak about the sexualization of our children in our taxpayer-funded public schools. Although parents can opt out of sex education, even if some teachers fail to notify the parents, our children are bombarded with the LGBTQ propaganda in the form of terminology, classroom decor, and even teachers' attire, all without parental consent. This type of propaganda is causing irreversible damage to our children by robbing them of their innocence and making them susceptible to future unhealthy and destructive choices. My son's beloved fifth-grade teacher gave him a list of SMCPS recommended books for summer reading. He couldn't wait to get in the mail, to get it in the mail. He picked "The Thing About Jellyfish" by Ellie Benjamin. "To our whore, mine and my husband and my son, the book described a homosexual relationship. At that time, my son did not even know what heterosexuality was, much less homosexuality. You robbed me and my son of his innocence. You robbed me of my son's innocence. Amazon refunded the cost of the book. Who will refund my child's innocence? Who? Who?" "My third grade, my third-grade student, my third-grade daughter, was confused about the classroom decor in her art class. Our daughter was surprised to discover that the rainbow was being used along with the word pride to represent the LGBTQ community in the classroom. Again, my daughter, a third grader, a third grader at the time, did not know what heterosexuality was, much less homosexuality. This is blatant sexualization of our children." I'm about to finish. "You robbed me of my daughter's innocence. Just last week, my third grader came home confused because her art teacher displayed a poster of a transgender individual, and she and her friend were debating if the individual was a woman or a man. This is blatant sexualization of our children, and it is done without..." This is blatant sexualization of our children, and it is done without parental consent. In any other public setting, if an adult blatantly sexualizes children, that adult goes to jail. But as in SMCPS schools, this is allowed. As guardians of the public trust, you, I demand that you write policy holding the sexualization of children in the St. Mary Public School. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brewer.
Sharon Page.
Hello.
Hello.
I am here representing ESMIC and also just myself, and I am here to say thank you very much. It's been a hard two years since March of 2020, we all know. You've heard me speak about wearing masks and other measures that we can take to keep ourselves safe. I have also spoken in favor of having COVID leave, which unfortunately I had to avail myself of this past week. I'm past my days, okay? So I am a nurse, I'm well past my time, or I would be wearing my mask. I just want to say thank you that, I don't know where you found your money. I don't know if it was your, you know, pin money or rainy day money or egg money, whatever my grandmother used to call it. She could always find a little bit of money somewhere. And I just want to say thank you for myself and for the other people who've had to use it. I was able to rest at home and not worry about my paycheck, not worry about if I was still going to be able to pay whatever bill I had. And I know I'm very blessed and fortunate that you all did make that provision. And I know a lot of teachers and other staff are very grateful because they had to take time off to take care of their children or their other family members who were ill with COVID, and then when they finally got it, they were out of leave. So I just, I can't say thank you enough. I know we've been well supported by you. We've been given everything we could possibly need, from masks to PPE, hand sanitizer, whatever we call, we say we need it, and we have it the next day. So just keep up the good work, because as I've said, we're not finished. The virus is very sneaky, and I don't think it's done with us yet, but we will stay on top of it. So everybody stay safe, wash your hands, wear your masks when you need to, and I hope we end the year strong. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Page.
Andrew Murray.
I apologize, I signed the run. I'm speaking with a virtual academy.
Not to worry, we will get to you shortly.
I was really eager. I wish Maggie Giles could tell you.
We're very pleased to have you here again. We wait for the presentation.
I'm very honored to be here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda, consistent of approval of the minutes of May 11, 2022, personnel, teachers, personnel administrative and supervisory, Chopticon High School Performing Arts trip to Disney World.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The motion passes unanimously. Next item are the action items. First, we have the approval of the FY 2023 Board of Education Budget, Dr. Smith and Mrs. McCourt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I too am very eager for the adoption of this budget. So a few highlights. The budget process has been very long this year, predominantly as a result of the implementation of the blueprint and integration in the FY 23 budget. So this budget does include blueprint funds from the state as well as required mandatory matching funds from the county government, and the integration of several restricted programs into our unrestricted budget and assigned for programming. The budget does include step and coal increases per the contract, per the current four-year agreement. It includes a transition of pension funds from the state to local expenses. It also includes contractual bus increases to allow for driver and bus aid rate increases, PVA increases for the bus contractors, minimum hours increases for our bus drivers, as well as the ever daunting fuel increases that we're all recognizing. We have also included increase in substitute pay rates for both our regular and long-term paraeducators, secretaries, and teachers from a rate as at 1,250 an hour for our high school diploma, GED graduates, and up to 1,325 an hour for that tier, up to a master's degree of 1,575 an hour, or for our long-term dedicated subs, up to 1,675 an hour. We have also incorporated a pilot program for an SMCPS-certificated teacher retirees, encouraging them to come back and fulfill some of our vacant teacher positions while we're actively recruiting for those positions, and to be provided a set per diem rate based on the step and range that they retired at. In addition, we have substitute nurse rate increases from 3,129 an hour for an associate's degree up to 3,675 an hour for an MA degree, recognizing a 2% increase. To summarize, our unrestricted fund budget revenues, the local funding increased to $121.5 million, which is a 6.9% increase coming from the county government, which they improved in their budget yesterday. We have projected out our revenues and expenses for the current fiscal year, and we believe that we can support $2 million use of fund balance in next year's budget, predominantly in the area of textbooks. We have a planned use of fund balance for the charter school of $287,000, state funding of $125.3 million. This does include, as we previously presented to you, a transition from restricted funds to the unrestricted funds for some of our blueprint programs of $3.8 million. And we also have included in there approximately $2 million of one-time additional pre-K enhancement state aid monies. That will fully, that will fund our implementation of full-day pre-K to meet our Tier 1 level students. We have $2.4 million in federal revenues, as well as $1 million in other revenues for a total overall budget of $252.7 million, or a $15.2 million increase in the unrestricted fund. There are two other areas I wanted to touch on. Food services budget, which is a separate enterprise fund, as well as our restricted funds budget. These are areas that we typically don't dive into a significant amount during your unrestricted fund operating budget presentations. However, there were significant changes in both of those in your budget book. Specifically for the food services fund, we have a state mandate, I'm sorry, a federal mandate that requires that we cannot maintain any more than the equivalent of three months' worth of reserves on our books. We did have in excess of that last fiscal year, and we anticipate an additional excess amount this fiscal year, 100% linked to the USDA free meal waiver program that has been placed during the pandemic. This is not going to be recurring going into next fiscal year. We'll be going back to very tight budget, minimum budget. We will be, so we have incorporated $3.6 million planned use of fund balance into your budget to put those monies towards one-time costs, high school cafeteria renovations, replacement of aging kitchen equipment, as well as upgrade of point-of-service terminals. On the restricted side, we have just been awarded a Maryland leads grant in the amount of $5.3 million. Those monies will be going to support grow our own staff program. Specifically, we added 20 FTEs for teacher apprentice in next year's budget, as well as staff support and retention in the science of reading. And Dr. Moore will be present at your next meeting to dive into the Maryland leads grant in much more detail. We've also incorporated a DOJ COPS grant of $500,000 that we're currently working on the application for, and we just applied last week for a new broadband grant for $339,000. Additionally, last week, we also received a grant award of $1.8 million for our pre-K expansion. This will allow for full-day pre-K for programs, classrooms, six FTEs for teachers, two special education FTEs, 11 paraeducators, as well as 2.4 IRT FTEs to support our enhanced pre-K program. And we have also received the award of $231,000 for a ready-for-kindergarten grant. So at this point, I'm requesting your approval of the FY 23 budget.
Thank you very much. Questions? Judy?
No questions, thank you.
Jim?
The only question I have, you were mentioning pay scale on between AA degree for registered nurses. I didn't know you could be an RN with an AA degree. Is that true?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry. That answers my question.
All right. My question's the DOJ COPS grant. What are we doing with that?
The application is currently underway, and I believe that Dr. Wyatt, Mr. Wyatt is still working on that.
And again, the funds can't be used to pay anybody. They have to be for the purchase of things.
Okay.
So one of the things that we're specifically looking at is all of our 1,500 security cameras that are all on this gigantic device tree. They run on a program called Symphony, and it's a good platform, it's a good program, but there's a much better program out there by a company called Vigilon. Vigilon is the ones that came out and demonstrated their metal detection software and some other things. While the hardware, we're not really interested in, the software does some really amazing things. So we'll probably be looking at moving all of our existing cameras over to a new software platform, and we will use this $500,000 probably to accommodate that switch.
And the broadband grant?
Again, that's going to go right over into IT, and it's, we're in the, we have, we have connected, I think 98% of all of our homes are connected or have the option to connect to high-speed internet through cable, and this will just be a further enhancement for that programming, the last mile portion of that.
This is a continued partnership from the first broadband grant that we received with the county government.
Yep.
You know, I'm really pleased that the commissioners funded us so that we are able to honor the negotiated agreement, and especially that they, following their public hearing, were willing to step up and to provide additional funds for us so that we would be able to cover the improvements that we wanted to make in bus driver and contractor compensation. I really also want to focus on the pre-K change that we are making. It truly is, there is so much to unpack within the Kerwin legislation. And this is one piece that we will be able to accomplish early. It will be a significant change, but the opportunity to provide students who are most challenged with full-day pre-K, I think, is something that is going to pay great dividends for those students going forward, and it will make a huge difference. And so I fully support what we're going to be able to do. The challenge for us, we have been supporting pre-K from a budget standpoint, almost wholly on our own. We're not funded by the county, very minimal funding from the state for those students. But through the blueprint legislation, we will be able to not only have the state monies that will come in, but once we know the number of students that we will have in pre-K, then going forward, there will be a certain county match for that as well, which will really allow us to dig in and help those students a great deal. So hats off to making this happen, and it will be, it's really going to go well for students, so I'm especially pleased for that.
Mrs. Washington?
Thank you. I want to thank you for all the work you and your staff have done, and the superintendent and executive team to bring forth this budget for approval. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions?
I have nothing. Well, that's not true.
Ms. McCourt is a very patient and flexible leader who works with other patient and flexible people as the, this is the, I can't tell you what's going on with money in Maryland, and it's restricted, it's unrestricted, but kind of restricted. Here's some money, no, here's some other money, here's some money, spend it however you want. Oh, wait, no, it has to be spent like this. It is just such a rolling, and as we're doing things, there just seems to be always a great deal of disinformation that comes behind where, it's just, this has been the most challenging budget year to keep things straight. And so please understand that in the most straightforward budget year, I struggle. So imagine how mightily I have struggled this year, and Tammy McCourt has not pushed me down a flight of stairs. She's probably thought about it, but she hasn't. And so thank you for that.
This has been, without a doubt, an incredibly challenging budget to bring together, and we still have not received our state aid numbers, by the way. We only received their annual budget certification statement last week, as well as the maintenance of evidence statement.
The one thing we do know is that we're not going to get a pleasant surprise.
Yes. Well, you know, one can hope. With that, is there a motion to, with respect to this item?
I move that the Board of Education approve the fiscal 2023 budget as presented and forward to the commissioners of St. Mary's County for their review and approval.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Passes unanimously. Next item is Policy DH, bonded employees and officers. Second reading, Mrs. McCourt.
On a roll. She's on a roll.
She is on a roll.
All right. Good evening again.
Good evening.
So the bond requirements of the superintendent and other county board employees policy recommendations, and this is for the second reading. The current policy states that it's a bonded employees and officers, and it is based on repealed placed statute, and it requires the superintendent employees who are responsible for or handling of funds to be bonded and for a statement indicating that filed with a clerk of the court. We reviewed at the last meeting what the bonding purpose serves. The county superintendent and any other employees of the county board shall give bond to the state and the sum required by the county board. There are no changes on that slide. Specifically on policy recommendation, we're requesting a change to the title from bonded employees and officers to bond requirements of the superintendent and county board employees, and that is per the Maryland Educational Article 6-109 as 6-110 has been struck. Additionally, we recommend adding, the purpose of the policy is to establish the bond requirements of the superintendent and other county board employees. And slight change of the wording here, the county superintendent and any other employee of the county board who handles the funds of the school system shall give bond of the county board who handles the funds of the school system shall give bond to secure the interests of the state and the county board, as their interest may appear in the penal system, the penal sum required by the county board. And furthermore, that the bond shall have the security of any guarantee, deposit, trust, and other similar company authorized under the laws of the state to act in this capacity, and the cost or fee for this security shall be paid by the county board. The executed bond shall be filed with the state comptroller, and we have been doing this. This is just an update of our policy to mirror what we are currently doing. The bond shall contain provisions that the employee shall faithfully perform the duties of the employee's office and pay over, and apply all money that comes into the employee's possession or control to the person and in the manner that the county board of direct education directs. And these bonds requirements may be satisfied by the purchase of the surety insurance or surety self-insurance provided by a pool established under Title 19, subtitle six of the insurance article, which is in place with May. The surety insurance or self-insurance shall be an amount required by the Board of Education. No definitions recommended. And this policy will be reviewed and evaluated according to the Board of Education of St. Mary's County Review Schedule and/or federal and state laws and regulations change. At this time, we recommend the approval of this agenda item.
Any questions or comments? Judy?
No questions. Thank you.
No questions. Thank you.
None from me?
None from me. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve Policy DH bonded employees and officers?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Policy DH revisions as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And next is Policy DJC procurement methods, second reading. Ms. Koster.
Hi. Good evening.
Good evening.
So yes, for, we're looking at second reading for Policy DJC procurement methods. And as discussed in the first reading, section three of this policy references exempt purchases, which are purchases of goods that are exempt from the requirement to obtain full and open competition. And exempt items might include textbooks, library books, and materials of instruction. This exemption is derived from the Maryland Code Education article. However, any purchases that are made with federal funds must comply with federal regulations, and under those regulations, there's no exemption for materials of instruction. Therefore, we're recommending that in section three, at the very end, we add, of this paragraph, we add the statement that the board is sometimes the recipient of federal grant awards in compliance with two CFR Part 200. Expenditures of federal funds may not be subject to this exemption and will require documentation of full and open competition or approval as a sole source purchase. So basically, just adding language to reference the federal guidelines. And that's the only change, so we are recommending that the Board of Education approve this agenda item.
Okay. Any questions? Judy?
What, for example, textbooks and those other items that are subject to exemption, what are the requirements for the exemption, that it's not open competition?
So do you mean what is, what is open competition?
No, what is like, what makes it not? Like, what is disclosing it from being open competition?
Oh, okay. So because in the Maryland Code Education article, it says that for a lot of things the school system buys, we, most things that cost over a certain threshold, we have to show that there was fair competition, open competition. We're not just purchasing from a vendor just because we feel like it, that we're actually doing our due diligence. So however, for example, a textbook, you may not want to go with the cheapest textbook on the market. You might want to get the textbook that best supports the curriculum and your goals. So the Maryland Code has an exemption and says if it's a textbook or material of instructions directly supporting instruction, you would be exempt from going around getting bids, comparing pricing. We still do that to a certain extent to make sure that we're getting the best value, but we are not held to, it's an exemption from our standard procurement guidelines. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes. Thank you so much.
Sure. Jim?
I was at a friends' library dinner the other night, and they were talking about eBooks. And I was surprised that the price of eBooks is very high. I would think, you know, it'd be like a third of a print document, but it's not.
I think there's a lot of resources that come with it, and often they'll give you like an eight-year license, and you're paying for access for an extended period of time. But they are pricey.
Pricey, and also timeline, too, if I recall. In other words, after so many months or something, you know, the buyer has to renew the purchase. So I just, more of a comment than a question, but I just, I was really surprised that eBooks are so expensive.
Yeah, they find a way. No questions?
None. Thank you.
All right. And I should have said for Policy DH as well as DJC, we did not have any input from the public or anyone else with respect to these, and they did follow our standard protocol of first reading, public hearing, and then second reading. So with that, do we have a motion to approve Policy DJC revisions as presented?
I move that the Board of Education approve Policy DJC procurement methods with the changes as noted.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. And next, we have the Virtual Academy update for the end of the year, Ms. Maggie Giles and the Virtual Academy staff. Mr. Murray, you're up.
Not yet. They're going to stay next to me because I'm going to read them one by one.
Technology is really challenging. That's, you know, that's one of those things.
Don't laugh, we're virtual. Shh, don't tell anybody that.
Windows P.
I'm working on it.
Windows.
See? They do this part for me.
Windows P, and then you want to do.
O'Brien to the rescue.
Maybe.
We do Mirror.
Yes.
There you go. And when you just go to present it.
Just click out of that, just over here. There you go.
There you go. It's like a regular PowerPoint.
Windows is hard. Or what is this? This is.
All right, never mind.
Just for the record, in the middle of the pandemic, all right, as the superintendent, I sat there and ran the Zoom meetings and the PowerPoint presentations and opening and closing, and I only crashed the system like three times.
All right. Well, you know, it's easy. So I surround myself with people that know much more than I do. Thank you very much.
It's all about the team.
Exactly. So, good evening, board members, Dr. Smith and Dr. Montgomery. I'd like to introduce you to my Virtual Academy staff here with me, Ms. Andrea Delude, fifth grade teacher, Mr. Andrew Murray, my art media teacher for grades three through 12, and Ms. Devin O'Brien, English Language Arts for grades nine through 12. My name is Maggie Giles, I'm the proud leader of the Virtual Academy, along with my ghost leader, Dr. Alex Jaffers. Tonight, we'd like to review, highlight, and inform the board about the Virtual Academy's So you all know that we provide a full online instruction for grades three through 12, and we have dedicated online technology, synchronous, asynchronous, and blended instructional models. We allow students grades nine through 12 the opportunity to create a blended hybrid schedule with Tech Center as well as their home school to complete their coursework completion. We meet the instructional needs of alternative instructional placements such as short-term home hospital students, as well as assisting high roads with IAC students. Currently, our enrollment is 337 students, middle school, high school, 131. We are graduating over 40 seniors currently. Our middle school is 116, and elementary is standing at 72. We have 36 students that are currently taking AP classes and 11 that are with CSM right now. We have 504 in IEP carriers at 33, and we are helping to service 58 at this moment home hospital students, but we've already serviced over 150. We work with Student Services to provide that virtual education to our home hospital students as well as our IAC students. I'd now like to invite Ms. O'Brien to come and enlighten you with some of the events and accomplishments that we have achieved over the past year.
Okay. So the, this slide kind of talks about what sets us apart. It seems to really integrate what we have in common with other schools, which is testing. But what doesn't, what it doesn't really highlight is the fact that the volume of testing across so many grade levels that we're doing in the building. So we did the PSAT in our school building, the kids did the school-based SAT at their home buildings, and then we had, and they're all listed here, but a whole variety of different types of like the MCAT testing, the high school, the testing required for a high school graduation and things like that. So just picture that kind of all being pushed into this kind of small, small space and being administered by a really, a small staff. We are building, we're working on building community in a variety of different ways and thinking about how to use the online virtual instructional model and just to create community, which is kind of, kind of different than when we all kind of migrated to our computers during the pandemic and we were in our own little spaces, right? Kind of like our safe spaces. And now we're thinking about how to build more bridges and connect the community in a real, in a real way. You know, as a teacher, one of the things that you miss with teaching virtually is that kind of vibe with the kids. So even when they come in for testing, you know, usually with testing, when I was in the regular building, with testing, it was like, oh, testing. And then when we had testing, everyone was like, ooh, kids, right? So I personally got to test some third graders, which I was pretty excited about, and that's going to kind of touch on what I'm going to talk about in another slide. But we're trying to build some clubs. You know, some of the things lend themselves really naturally to an online environment like a Minecraft club. Unfortunately, I tried to start a scholars' club this year, it did not meet with overwhelming excitement, but we will try again. So we're looking at different things and ways that kids can connect with each other apart from their academic work. And so what else sets us apart is, of course, the technology. And I think that's, what's pretty cool is how adept the kids are with the technology, getting back to those third graders that impressed me so much. You know, we have these special, like the two-in-one laptops where they can write on them, and they can type, but I was amazed at how well they can type in third grade and just how adept they are at like, you know, troubleshooting their screens and using their laptops. And it was, it was really, really cool. This also is kind of neat because I teach high school, the way the kids can attend the Tech Center and also do virtual programming. So they're kind of getting the best of both worlds. And honestly, you know, they're going to Tech Center, they're getting virtual programming, and they're able to do sports at their home schools. So it's really cool. I mean, they're, it's really getting out of what I would consider like a factory mentality when it comes to schooling and thinking about what individually works best for the learner and their lifestyle and their choices. And we have some kids doing really cool things. We have kids who are highly, highly involved in competitive sports, even on a national level. We have kids who are, you know, involved in working with programs in their communities that have internships, that have jobs, that are learning to do all different kinds of things. And because of the flexibility that's allowed with a virtual school program, they're able to do those things at a much younger age than a lot of other kids. Or they don't have to do them, you know, in the evening hours or in the summer, they can actually have this integrated into their life, which I think is super cool. I think that's about it. I think that Ms. Delude is going to talk a little bit more about elementary, and then I'm going to talk again about the application process.
At the Virtual Academy, we have a unique setup to facilitate a successful learning environment. I'd like to bring Ms. Delude to the podium to discuss the elementary cohort and our success coach model.
It has been my pleasure this year to be the fifth grade teacher at Virtual Academy and to rope Dr. Smith into hearing my students talk about math.
Yeah, we did.
Our elementary program is one of the most rigorous programs I've ever been, you know, been a part of. And we've, we have the classes split into cohorts so that we can have smaller groups, which every student benefits from. We have a success coach that meets with them during their asynchronous time. So when the morning group is meeting with me, the afternoon group is working on asynchronous practice work, and they have the success coach there to help them troubleshoot, to help answer questions. If they run into a problem on an assignment that they're finishing up, they can, they have that support. So they're never just set adrift. There's always someone there to support them. And those smaller cohorts give us the opportunity to have those small groups. I can really see where students are struggling, I can see where students need enrichment, and I can provide that, you know, with prepared materials, but also on the fly when I see something click, and I know it's time to push that kid a little bit further.
I'm going to bring Ms. Delude back up to talk a little bit about the student work in a second. Ms. O'Brien can talk to us a little bit about what makes a virtual, a great Virtual Academy student.
Okay. So the staff and Ms. Giles kind of came up with this idea that we would have a mascot of a shark. And so it's a little more elementary than I'm used to, you know, high school and middle school are more snark than shark, really, but, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to really wrap my.
More shark.
Yes, that's right. So, but basically, they came up with these core values and core things that we're looking for. And these are exemplified in our application process, which is new for this year. So because we've learned throughout the year, kind of the qualities that we look for in a virtual learner and who's going to be successful in virtual school and who is, who's going to struggle, looking at like scholarly, honest, attentive, resourceful, and kind, as it's demonstrated in the application, which means letters of recommendation, looking at the attendance, looking at, we have a technology assessment, so looking at how adept the kids are with technology and how much they can kind of puzzle through that piece. So when the application was put together, the students had to address each of these pieces of the shark kind of mentality to demonstrate that they would be good candidates for the program. So that's a kind of a way that the program is evolving, looking at what, you know, when we kind of implement things and see what's working well and what could be improved, trying to really focus on those skills and helping other kids, helping the kids that are there develop them, but also looking for the kids coming in with those particular qualities.
So one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we were improving on was our communication with our parents, students, and staff.
And so one of the, we have a Google site, so we have a website. It's kind of one-stop shopping, and it's, it's evolving all the time, so we can update it in real time. We also have a newsletter that we put out, just like all the other schools do, a small newsletter, and that's featured on the site as well. So whenever we have information, and I think that in a virtual environment, you kind of have a greater need for communication, or at least to have someplace that parents can go to access what's going on this week, or when do I have to drop my kid off for testing or anything like that. So we've been using that and publishing a weekly schedule so that people can stay up on what's going on and be in the right place at the right time, and provide links and things for their home schools. For example, you mentioned prom earlier, so we provided prom information for every school because we had kids, you know, in the Virtual Academy from all the schools. So anything that applies to a bunch of kids, we try to make sure that they have the information that they need in multiple places to make them successful.
Okay. Now I'd like to bring Ms. Delude back to the podium to show you some work samples from of our students.
So this year, we've been using a wide variety of platforms and programs. The math that's on this, on this slide is from Desmos. It's an interactive program where in the top part, the students were looking at how to balance equations and getting that, that visual model rather than just looking at numbers. In the bottom one, they are, they were learning about the distributive property of multiplication and really, you know, again, it was an interactive model. This is a screenshot from a third grader's video. He researched dolphins and was able to make a video that informed his peers about the dolphin's life cycle, habitat, food web, and characteristics. One of my students wrote a lobster rap. He learned all about lobsters, and so he wrote a song and actually performed it for the class. We also had students using Minecraft to build dioramas. The old shoebox dioramas are out the door right now. We've got Minecraft. This student had created NPCs, non-player characters, that the person visiting the Minecraft world could go up to, click on, and she had written first-person narratives for each of the characters who were actual historical figures that she researched. No, that's fine.
Sure.
Yeah. This, the screenshot didn't work on this video. It, this one was another Minecraft world. The student had researched the writing of the Declaration of Independence and actually built a model based on her research of Independence Hall, including where all the benches were, where the people were, and she made a Minecraft model of the Declaration. One of our seniors did a report on nineteen eighty-four, comparing nineteen eighty-four to two thousand twenty-two, including things like surveillance and, you know, the, you know, Ministry of Truth and stuff like that and creating those parallels to the text. We had more students in fourth grade, this is a fourth grade work sample, researching the Declaration of Independence and finding all of their research and then being able to present it. The students actually also present to each other, to their whole class. This is for the Boston Tea Party. They had to know timeline, location, the natural resources that were there that made the whole thing possible. One of my students came up with, well, without Boston, no one's living there, and without a harbor, there's no boats. And so, but they were able to present their information to each other. We've had other parents come to the presentations as well, so they're learning those speaking skills. The first round, there was lots of stuttering, lots of, oh no, my camera doesn't work anymore. But now they're eager, they're asking to present first and signing up and, you know, it's just an amazing thing. This is another Desmos, this one wasn't interactive, it was a worksheet, and they had the opportunity to find the materials around their house to learn about probability. And in the event that they didn't have the coins or dice or whatever the, they needed, there were also interactive materials available online for them to use. So we encourage kids to do stuff off the screens as well. But the platforms that we have available to us give the kids so many ways to show their learning, share their learning, and explore new topics.
So one of the things at the Virtual Academy that is unique to us is we have a school counselor who is working with grades three through twelve. She can implement, quaver a bunch of different SEL topics, and she goes into the classrooms virtually and works with the kids that way. She's set up a counseling system where students can go online and fill out a, you know, basically an appointment form where they can meet with her virtually. We can also go into the classrooms and if there is an issue, then we can pull the student out into breakout rooms and we can work with them that way as well. We have filed CPS reports doing that. We have worked with parents who have asked us to pull students out of the classes to talk with them whether there was an issue that happened at home that night or, you know, what have you. So we do have the ability to work with kids one-on-one, though it is a different type of environment than it would be in an in-person school. We have a school social worker, psychologist, PPW, college and career liaisons, and other special programs as needed. I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Andy Murray. He is our visual arts and media teacher for grades three through twelve. All three hundred and thirty kids work with him. But he also has the opportunity to work with all of these kids through the counseling program. Because Ms. Hogan, she basically partners with him because he has the opportunity to allow her to come into the room because he has all of the students. So I'd like to take the opportunity for him to talk to you a little bit about what she's done with him in his elementary class as well as some of his high school classes. And yes, he is very excited to talk to you because he thought that he was going to be able to do the whole presentation, but-
I was disappointed today when it wasn't all about myself and my program. So maybe another time I can come back. So yeah, Ms. Hogan and I have worked together really well this year to help our students make the transition from in-person to virtual. It's been an amazing experience. We have worked together to utilize art in a visual way to help students express themselves creatively, to find their voice through the virtual platform. And it's been really inspiring to help students through this medium discover new ways to explore potential career paths that they might take in the future. I think that this program offers a really unique opportunity for students to explore different pathways that they wouldn't explore otherwise in person. Through art, we've learned quite a bit together. It's been a really collaborative experience between myself and my students, which is like my dream. I get chills talking about it. Sometimes I get a little teary-eyed. My students have definitely, it's been one of my favorite years in my career because I have, it's, it's definitely a new frontier, you know. And as a teacher, I've planned lessons not really knowing what the outcome is and every time they've blown me away. So, and then that, that turns into a terrific learning opportunity for myself, where they show me new pathways and technology on how to create art, how to collaborate with their social, emotional learning. And so it's been a tremendous year. So I'm really looking forward to next year and how it'll grow. And, and I'm honored to speak on behalf of Maggie and-
Our secondary kids also work with Mr. Murray. And some of the pieces that the kids have drawn over the year have definitely sparked some feelings in them when it comes to, when we talk about suicide awareness information. We talk about curriculum and college advising and counseling. All of our kids have opened up over the past year when it comes to college and career advising, because we have a very small group when it comes to eleventh and twelfth graders. And they're allowed to open up and in their own way of determining what they want to do when they grow up. And they can talk to us and tell us what exactly, you know, what do I want to do? What can I do? Who do I talk to about this? And we have a great group of adults that really listen and we have the time to do that. They're not hurried. They feel like people are going to sit back and talk to them. We can talk to them about CSM and dual enrollment, tech center, curated schedules, and pursue interest in, you know, things that they may not have the time to do at the home schools because they have caseloads of three and four hundred kids and we don't. So we really do get a chance to know them well. So these are kind of the accomplishments that we have worked through with virtual this year, and it's been a growing environment. We've really brought on a team of teachers that thrive in the virtual environment and love what they do. And, you know, we've decided that we were going to create a survey for all of our kids that we're going to be pushing out next week and determining, you know, what can we improve? We need reflection. We need kids that'll give us feedback and honest feedback. So that's something that we're going to be working through next week and just saying, hey, you know, what else can we do better for you all? So these are the classrooms that ended up coming out of the mod that we, you guys had approved a couple of months back. So really what they turned it into was their own unique experience and the kids see this on the other side. Dr. Smith came through and walked through the other week and it really was, it's kind of like their own dorm room, so to speak. They've created it around what they love. And it's a learning environment for both the teacher and the kids. So it really feels, and when the kids come in the building, we show them what exactly the teachers are teaching out of. So it's, it's a really, it's been great.
I never thought I would feel so creative in a cubicle. I, I say all the time, when I was in college, I never thought I would aspire as a teacher to work out of a cubicle. And it's been like the one, the, the most like rewarding place I've worked is out of a cubicle. And so it just goes to show that these new areas provide like unknown blessings that we weren't aware of until we do it. So it's, it's been humorously inspiring. If that's a word. But I'm the art teacher, so I can, I can be creative with my words.
So, there's any questions?
Questions or comments, Judy?
I remember when I first came to this board and when the Virtual Academy first came to fruition from the ESAR, ESAR two-three funds, I was just an incredible idea at the time and it was just like, a lot of students are going to benefit from this. And then, and then later into the year, we were like, here are the models for the rooms that the teachers are going to be teaching out of. And they were incredibly like modern and, you know, they were going to be great environments for teaching. And now that's where it's now. And then we get to hear about all this feedback from this year of work, lots of work. It's not easy to make something happen out of thin air, which is Virtual Academy essentially. So kudos to all of you. That was an amazing presentation. And I do have a few questions, but I know that a lot of students who have been in this environment have been thriving and that they really appreciate all the work and care that you give and that you dedicate to them. But my question is, what are the retention rates looking like? I don't know if you finished your applications already, but how many students are going to be returning to this model of learning?
So we are going to probably bring back about a hundred, hundred and sixty-two out of the three hundred and thirty.
And obviously that does include seniors who are graduating.
Right.
All right, thank you. And then for the application system, you know, you talked about like letters of recommendations and like, you know, essays are like hitting on all the shark- qualities, yes. Is it like a lottery system? Are you scored on a metric and then students who meet a certain threshold are then placed on a lottery?
That's exactly what we're doing. We want students, this year we found that a lot of students that came to us thought it was going to be just the Ingenuity Platform. They didn't realize, I think, that the requirements were meets, that they had to be on meets, that our teachers were teaching live. You know, we opened it up to a lot of people and it was, it was hard for kids. It was hard for kids to realize that the expectation was high. And in any new program, you know, you find kids that, that just weren't successful. We had kids that returned to the homeschool due to that. We had kids that moved. We had kids that, you know, just, just didn't make it. So, you know, it was not an easy program. It was not at all. It was pretty rigorous for a lot of it. So, you know, the application definitely kind of narrowed it down to what we really expected our kids to do. Anybody can be virtual. It's just that they have to be virtual with organization skills. They have to be independent learners. And their parents have to be on board with us. And I think I found a lot of issues with that. The parents would just, they'd leave them be and that wasn't what we needed. We need support.
If you don't mind me adding, when I was in grad school, it was through an online program and I actually had the idea of, oh, this will be easier. Because not in person, how is a professor going to grade my drawings? And boy, was I wrong. But I will say that I grew tremendously. So I think what we've learned is that having students with, you know, that independent mindset along with the support, they're able to actually thrive. So that's, that's why we're excited for next year.
That's awesome. And then what are our numbers looking like for next year?
We are sitting at one seventy right now.
Nice, okay. Thank you so much.
Question I have is, is there a way of measuring the performance of in-person versus virtual? SATs, common exams?
We are doing, the I-Ready is for our third through eighth graders, so we can gauge how they're doing against their peers. We also have the DIBBLES exam that is given to our students in the elementary grades. They're taking the same test with the state testing. They're doing the same thing there that they're doing in the regular brick and mortar schools. We're gauged on the same content that the home schools are. So right, everything that they're doing at the home schools, we're doing as well. So the report cards that Dr. Jeffers sends out to all the home schools, we are going right along with what they're doing too.
Second question has to do with social interaction with other students. Is it fair to ask that a lot of our virtual students are locked at home? They don't have that interaction with other, other students?
I would say it's by choice. I would say that a lot of our families are choosing whether or not they want to participate in activities outside of the home. We have done a couple of different activities throughout the year, such as we did the winter wave, where we had kids come out right before winter break and just kind of celebrate, hey, you know, it's winter. We're having field day on June tenth, where the kids are going to be able to come out and just kind of have like playdates with us. We've had kids come out for, I mean, testing might not seem like a, a social interaction, but they've been out where they can see each other, not just on screens. The social events we have had are virtual for the most part, and we've had a good turnout for that. But, you know, with regard to major community events, not so much. But we do have a pretty good showing when it comes to the high school and sports and different events that way. So we have about, I'd say fifteen to twenty kids that are involved in tech-centered classes. So it really is up to the parents and whether or not they choose to bring the kids, you know, to any of our events or, you know, anything that's outside of the school system.
Well, and a subset of our population are people who are living with immunocompromised people. So you have to think about that piece, that we do have some kids who even have trouble getting to the school to pick up materials because that's how cloistered their life is right now because of the people in their home. So that piece is like something else that is like another moving part to that consideration of their social, emotional growth. And you can definitely see a difference with those kids. And hopefully it's something that's not going to be long-term for them.
I've also noticed that some of our students who may not have been as social in-person are more social online because they feel more comfortable.
Really?
So this is a more positive experience because not everyone's fit for in-person as well. I myself would have benefited from this program growing up. So it's been inspiring to watch those students also come out of their shells and flourish through that platform because it takes away some of the social pressures and they get to really grow into who they are.
I'd say a number of our applications that we're receiving right now, kids are writing on there. They don't want to be in the big schools. They have social anxiety. They learn better alone, by themselves, in a small group. So that's, it's been kind of eye-opening with that, too.
Yeah, I heard on the radio a couple of weeks ago, I think nationally, homeschooling went from two percent to five percent.
It did.
And a lot of parents, I guess, feel the kids are safer at home.
They sure do. A lot of homeschool parents are, are bringing their kids virtual as well because they can't just do it at home. They want to bring them into another, to more social classrooms, so.
I think sometimes when you're a part of a certain minority group as well, it provides a certain platform for education where it takes out the social pressure of being judged or misjudged based on who you are as a person, as a human being.
Of course, the, the flip side of that is a lot of times the kids have to go through all of those transgressions to make it in life. What worries me is you get somebody that's caught, you know, coddled and they get out in the world and they just can't compete. I mean, it's, it's a-
It is, it is.
It's a flip side.
Yeah.
We're tough on them too.
And the other thing to realize, there's two things. First, there are fourteen hundred kids in St. Mary's County who are currently being homeschooled that are not in any of our programs. And of those, over almost a thousand aren't in an umbrella program. Parents are at home figuring out whatever they're doing with their kids all year long, using whatever resources there may be. It's a, there's a lot of, there's a lot of potential out there for a service, for something like this. And then the second is, the world that I know, right? The world that I, and I'm, I'm fifty, gonna be fifty-six soon. The world that I know is not the world that these kids know. And the work that I know, getting up every day, trundling off, I, we used to wear a tie every day, now I'm not, sorry. That's changing. The pandemic has brought about a revolution of reassessment of what people do. And there's a great possibility that in the next five, ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty years, work is done in a different environment where you are not all gathering together in some high-rise in the middle of a city. You are spread out all with your space and your creativity and you are producing like that. In many ways, we, I know for a fact that the high school kids that you are churning out, the forty-two graduates, if they go off to their college or university, you are going to encounter, Judy is going to, even at Yale, you are probably going to encounter some of that learning virtually, online, in some kind of a coursework like that. Everybody is moving to it. And these kids are building that self-advocacy, leaning into that independence. You are providing the space for them to fail forward. They're making mistakes. They're, but you, but you're working with them as they, as they develop those skills that you are, for R you use, you put, what's your R in Sharks? Resilience, yeah. That's, I mean, like, that's a, that's an incredibly important- That's, I mean, like, that's an incredibly important part of learning. And so, you know, I don't want to step on anybody else's comments, but, and I'll be silent after you're done.
Sure.
You are, in many ways, this Virtual Academy, it's an incubator. You know, you are all looking at some of the most forward-thinking, progressive ideas in education, and then you are working a way to implement it. And you are learning as much as your kids are learning in the process. So it's, I mean, I really look to the way in which you are going, you're integrating the digital space and everything because ultimately, this is something that will weave its way into the fabric, particularly of our middle and high schools, when we have courses that can't run on their own at one, but collectively can run for the group. Our kids will be prepared and able to do it. So I just, you know, I love coming down and visiting, I loved your spaces. I love the way that you've created that. And most importantly, the, these kids are held to the exact same standard as everybody else. And let me assure you, we can absolutely compare apples to apples on grade levels for how they're doing on things. And so I just, maybe one day, I'll be a Shark too. Shark Week every week at the Virtual Academy, I love it.
And if anyone wants a class code to come and visit, just email me. I'd be happy to give it to you.
Oh, yeah, pop in, it's good stuff.
You know, I've spoken before about the fact that there are certain learners who learn better this way. A family member who has ADHD, who was absolutely not successful in an in-person classroom, has become incredibly successful by learning virtually, the opportunity to get up and move when he needs to move, and not being told by a teacher, you have to sit, you have to sit, you have to sit, you have to sit. So for those students who learn better in this environment and have the skill set and the drive to do it, I think this is an outstanding opportunity for them. I'm also struck by the staff that you have. I see many familiar names who have many other jobs within the system, and yet who are making and taking the time to be a part of this program. I know one of your success coaches, and I cannot imagine a more peppy person who, you know, is just ready to say, you can do this, and let me help you figure out how it needs to be done. I spoke with another member of your staff I've known for many, many years, and she was almost in tears over this being one of the best programs she's ever had the opportunity to participate in. So when you have staff that are dedicated and totally bought into this and willing to put the time and energy in, this is an incredible platform to be able to provide an opportunity for children across the spectrum. I run into people, and I'm myself guilty of it at times, where you hear something and you picture it in your mind of, this is the way it is for everybody, and it isn't. It just isn't. And the more we can understand that, when we reach out to students and parents appropriately and work through them, with them at their level, great things can happen. And I applaud you for what you've been able to do for students and hope that this is something that we will continue for years to come because for those kids who need it, they really, really need it.
This is the hardest working staff I've ever been with. You know, I handpicked almost every single one of them. I've never seen people work so hard to build a program from the ground up. They are, they're magnificent at what they do. You know, every day I walk in there, and I just, I cannot believe the dedication they have to this place. And I can tell you probably, these three guys right here, I mean, just, it's frustrating, it's hard, but they do it every day. And I mean, it's, like I said, it's probably the best job I've had in a really, really long time.
I think the juxtaposition of the building that you're in that's historic, and yet the modern-day, forward-thinking work that you are doing is such an incredible, incredible piece. And I thank you for that. But Mr. Murray, you were going to say, and I interrupted, I'm sorry.
Well, I just, I'm no brown-noser, I'd like to think of myself as pretty authentic. However, Maggie is one of the best administrators I've ever worked under. She allows you to, she empowers you to be yourself, and it's been an incredible year. Like, we all walk around and we're just like, you know, this is amazing. Like, it's because we, I used to think, my mother-in-law asked me years ago, like, where do you see your career going? And I jokingly said, I would love to be an online teacher, not thinking that would ever be a possibility. And to find a place where you can do that, but then you have a boss who empowers you to be your true, authentic self, and then that, you know, that transcends out to our students. Like, we, when we feel that, we know that we are encouraged to try new things and, because we know that we're supported. So, yeah, I just had to give it to you.
Thank you.
It's well deserved.
Mrs. Washington?
I am just energized, I am thrilled by the work that you're doing. You started from the ground up, and you are creating something new. And our job is to meet the individual's unique needs of each student, and this is a program that does this. One size doesn't fit all, and students need different things to be successful. It doesn't work all the time for all students with 25 in a classroom, but I thank you for what you're doing. Students still have an opportunity if they wish to participate in the extracurricular activities at their school, the Tech Center, or activities that you have for students. I have so many little notes here of everything you said that was so good. I liked the way you get the feedback from the students, what they like, what they didn't like, what worked, what didn't work. And you are open to listen to ideas, you're open to your staff being who they are, you know, giving them flexibility so they can try new things and do new things. I think that's wonderful, that they're not tied up. So I really thank you for what you're doing, and it's just wonderful. I'm excited about it, and it's just wonderful. I thank you.
Thanks for letting us do it. Thank you very much, and thank you for sharing this with us tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much. Ladies and gentlemen, that brings us to the end of our meeting. The future board meeting is for Wednesday, June 8th. And please note that due to some scheduling conflicts that we have, the meeting will now begin for executive session at 1:00 and open session at 2:00 PM. And with that, we are adjourned.